Good evening, everybody. The City of Peabody Zoning Board of Appeals. Excuse me, one minute. The City of Peabody Zoning Board of Appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 40A and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The Secretary will read the legal notice or state that such notice has been waived. All applications this evening will be heard in the order they were received in the City Clerk's office. The petitioner or petitioner's representative will present the subject application to the board. The Chair may limit the length of all remarks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I'll just say it so everybody can understand it. Excuse me. We are going to go in order this evening. Number one is a continued application, so that will not be read into the microphone. It will just, you'll get an overview as to what's going on. When it's your turn to come up, either you, the petitioner, your lawyer, or your builder, or whomever, will come up to the microphone. Make sure you turn it on, just press the button once, state your name and address for the record, and then tell us why you're here, what you want. Remember, we're here for dimensional relief. So you're building a garage, you're building a deck, you're building a little addition, dimensions, reasons why, et cetera, et cetera. Excuse me. At that point, the board will ask you some questions, and then I say, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor? We usually get a few people that will come up, state their name and address for the record, and tell us what a wonderful neighbor you are, and how this addition that you're putting on is going to do so much for the neighborhood, and that's wonderful. And then I say, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition? And here where it gets a little dicey, because we have a pretty good amount of people here tonight, so if you're here in opposition of something, and there are five, 10, 15 of you, you can all come up, you can all state your name and address for the record, tell us why you're in opposition, make sure that it has everything to do with the dimension, the variance that they're asking for. We do not want to hear any neighborly, you know, I go through my little spiel about, you know, the leaves fall in your pool, the addition is going to block the sun when you eat your breakfast, the dog box all night, the kids have the radio, you know, we don't want to listen to that. You know, I say it, I say it every month, and I'm almost getting tired of hearing myself say it, but, you know, for the new people, those are the things we do not want to hear about, and I will do something like this because you're wasting everybody's time. We want concrete reasons why you are opposed to whatever your neighbor is doing. At that point, your neighbor, or their attorney, or whatever, can come back up to the podium and explain some of your concerns, maybe try to fix it. Excuse me, again. And then the board might ask some more questions. Let me just interject that the best petitions that come before us in a neighborhood are ones where you have already spoken to your neighbors, and your neighbors are not in the dark about what you're doing, and you have come to some great agreement before you even come to us. All that being said, we then take a vote for or against. You know, where, and I say this every month, too, and it really is the truth. We are a very, very, very fair board. We take everybody into consideration. We take every petition individually. We go look at where you live. We, you know, think about why you want whatever you want to build, what's going on. What we do not do in this board is we do not think too kindly on people that build first and then come and ask for a variance. That's not what a zoning board is all about. A zoning board is here because you want to build something, and you don't have enough room in your yard, or you have a brook running through the left side of your house, and you want to, so you're going to have to build on the left side of your house. So you come before us and you explain that to us, and we either say, yeah, that's fine, we understand, go ahead, or we say no, and then you just can't do it. Zoning laws and rules and regulations are put into effect to obey. You are here because there's a little glitch in the zoning, and you need a variance. So after we take a vote, and if you are denied or approved, there's a 20-day waiting period. If you are denied, you can always appeal it. That is your privilege. The decision will be typed and filed with the City Clerk. Once the decision is filed with the City Clerk, the 20-day appeal period begins. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. When you come to the podium, please speak directly into the microphone, speak clearly. We are having some trouble with people understanding us and actually hearing us. Couple of other things, when I say this every month, too, and it always happens, please do not speak from your seat. If you had, if you came up to the podium to speak for or against something, and then you go back and sit down, and you remember something, or if your neighbor is saying something that you agree with, don't shout out from your seat anything. Just raise your hand or come back to the podium. I say it every month, and every month somebody shouts out from their seat. So, I believe at this point, I can tell you that the meeting minutes are made public, that these meetings are broadcast tonight, right now, on Channel 9, and we also are streamed live on Facebook. I don't know why, but we are. So, that's about it. If you have any questions as you go along, we'll help you. I'd like to say hello to Tammy. She is watching, one of our City Hall employees. And so at this point, we are going to start with number one, which is a continued application of LCI Management, and Attorney Kelty, I believe, is going to come to the podium. Mr. Attorney Kelty, you're on.
Good evening, thank you, members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street here in Peabody, Mass. I appear this evening on behalf of LCI Management of 18 Sargent Street in Gloucester. We are here to seek same variances that were before this board at our meeting of 1 January 27th. Following the January 27th meeting, we had a neighborhood meeting onsite on February 3rd. We will have a special permit hearing on March 12th before the City of Peabody City Council, and we require a, we have filed with the Conservation Commission, and we will be before the Conservation Commission with a request for determination on, that'll also be on March 11th. The issue before you this evening is the grant of two variances. One, which is to allow a 40-foot setback for the front yard of the property, which is, I'm sorry, a 30-foot setback, where 50 is required. That 30 was set in the special permit back in 1993. The then-builder developer had decided that they would set the building at the same distance back as the residences that were there at the time, and so the City Council allowed them to have that same front setback. The other variance that we're seeking is a minimum rear setback where 50 is required. We're asking for 40. And this is something that occurred after the building was built. We have decided that we are going to do a 190 by 97 addition, which will be at the same setback as the existing, as the existing structure, and then we will build a building connected to the original building that will appear to be, in every sense, the same quality material, the same type of material, and that will be, that should, no, it's not going to reach. No, maybe it will. Nope. It was too good to be true. In any event, we had our neighborhood meeting on the 3rd of this month, and at that, we discussed issues such as the hours of operation. We were hoping to be 24/7. We have agreed that we would reduce those hours to 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We were hopeful that that would be satisfactory to our neighbors. We discussed the location of the building and whether or not it ought to move back closer to the neighborhood. That didn't seem to make any sense, and I think when we finished with that neighborhood meeting, that was rejected. We discussed the location of a set of loading doors. We discussed the fact that, which are at the rear of the premises, but they are not, there is no loading dock, which would require trucks to back up to it and then offload. It is at the same level as the sidewalk. It'll be sliding Plexiglas doors that will slide open, and people can bring their storage into the facility. There are no entryways, but for this particular entryway I'm discussing with you now, there's no access to these buildings all the way around the building. In other words, you come in, you go through those sliders. Once you're in the premises, you determine which floor you're going to be on, and you travel with your materials through the aisles that are located within the inside of the building. So there's no traffic in terms of human, or cars, or people accessing storage units from the exterior. None of that occurs. We talked about car trips. We said that at peak hour, we would possibly generate seven trips per hour at the peak hours of the day. Our experience is that there are about seven to 12 trips per week in one of these facilities, because once people have paid their rent and located their materials inside the premises, they seldom visit it unless it's out of necessity, or unless they're bringing something more there, or procuring something. We explained that we have no U-Haul rental out of this facility, so there'll be no U-Hauls left on site after we've closed. We discussed our, I'm sorry, I said hours of operation, but we also discussed that we would be bound by the hours that the Building Commissioner's Office places on construction. There's no Sunday construction. It's generally 7:00 a.m. to, construction is 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then on Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to, 7:00 a.m. to about, I think, 5:00 p.m. is, I think, all they allow you, perhaps even four. But those are in writing at the Commissioner's Office, and my discussions with Commissioner Talarico is, will be bound by those, and we will not be asking for any, we're not going to be asking for any relief from Sunday. We are, we also discussed, on the westerly side. And it was some thought that it was going to actually be a loading dock with trucks, but it will not be. It'll be accessible, it'd be at ground level, and we'll be able to access that without difficulty. I talked about the two fences, talked about the reduction, I talked about rebuilding the fence, and those seem to be the highlights. And the thing that I didn't get to was, the lights will shut off at night when we close our doors, and the only lights that'll remain would be a couple of lights on the building that would allow the parking lot to be, but not freestanding lights, but allow if anybody was patrolling, or, you know, was on the property, they would be able to see their way around the building. But they will not be freestanding, and any lights that we put on the premises are all going to shine toward the building or down to the ground. We're happy if the, if the board wants to condition this permit with hours of operation. We'd be happy to do that. I think that the, eventually, the City Council will probably do that, but when we go before the City Council, it will be for a modification of a special permit. The 1993 special permit states that even if your use is allowed, which this is, we will need to go back and revisit the special permit and have this used allowed. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have. I think I covered most, just about all of the issues that we discussed at the neighborhood meeting, and I'm happy to answer questions that the board may have.
Through the Chair. Just a real quick, Attorney Kelty, well, I just got an alert that while you were up there on the TV, they couldn't hear you, so if you wouldn't mind just giving the 30-second blurb just to repeat what you said up there, just so we have it clean for the record.
I think that what I did was I explained about the loading door, that the loading door is at ground level, and as such, there is no loading dock. I also suggested that there are two fences, one which is wooden, and that would be replaced, the other which is chain link, and we will agree that any portions of the chain link fence that are in need of repair will replace them happily, and there's an area between the two fences that would be cleaned on a monthly basis by our landscapers. Oh, yes, and I also recited that on the far left, there are two tiers of parking, and we will only have one tier of parking, and the lower tier will be reseated, will be, the parking area will be removed, and it'll be all landscaped.
Questions by the board? Okay, anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Any comments that you didn't say last time? Okay, the matter's before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing. A motion to approve with the condition of the hours of operation being 7:00 a.m. opening to 8:00 p.m. closing.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Number two is this evening, Black Roof Properties LLC.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 24th, 7:00 p.m. We'll get auditorium City Hall, 20 Lowell Street. Peabody on the application of Black Roof Properties LLC. Care of Jeffrey Moll for variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended Section 7.2, as it applies to the premises noted at 19 Sammaset Road, Peabody, Map 32, Lot 91. Petitioner seeks a variance to side yard setback where 10 feet are proposed and 20 feet are required. Properties located in our one zoning district. Application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's office in Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Good evening, members of the board and Madam Chairperson. My name's Lou Crohn. I'm the attorney on behalf of Black Roof Properties LLC and its principal, Jeffrey Moll, who is here in the audience if you'd like to ask him questions after I finish my presentation. I understand the board's short on time, so being respectful of that, we're looking for a side setback from what's effectively 20-foot setback to a 10-foot setback for pre-existing non-conforming open deck, an addition to the open deck. In actuality, if you look at the pictures submitted, specifically the one showing the old and new construction of the deck, you'll see that the reddish, brownish, dark old existing is actually only 13 feet already off, so it's previously non-conforming. The new, according to the plan that's been submitted, the plot plan, would only be 10 feet. Effectively, we're not degrading the zoning in any way, shape, or form, and I will submit to the board that it was an absolute mistake that this was not undertaken with the proper zoning setback when the permits were pulled. There was a contractor error. As soon as the discovery, the error was discovered, it was, obviously, construction stopped, and we came before the board seeking the pound of cure as opposed to the ounce of prevention. Very apologetic and appreciative of the fact that that's not the way it's supposed to be done. We acknowledge this. But what we're looking for is a very marginal, small, de minimis almost, setback for an open deck that's only going to be a foot or so off the ground, which will, of course, increase the value of the property and the neighborhood and the tax basis to the City of Peabody. Again, my client is here if you'd like to ask any questions of him, and we do extend our sincerest apologies for the misunderstanding. We're not trying to skirt the process. An error was made by the contractor. The contractor and my client are obviously taking that up, but we're here hoping to not have to take down the existing five-foot addition on a deck that is already previously non-conforming for what effectively is a three-foot discrepancy from what's already there. That being said, I'm respectful of the time. Any questions? I'm happy to answer the best I can, and again, my client is here if you'd like to have him answer any questions.
Okay, so, as I understand it, and I appreciate your apology, however, you built this extended, extension of your deck without a building permit. You pulled a permit for inside work only. The building inspector, who was across the street, happened to notice that you were doing some building outside and caught your mistake. So you didn't catch the mistake, the building inspector caught your mistake, and here you are tonight, asking forgiveness after the fact. I do have a couple of questions. So is your client going to live here?
No, ma'am. This is a property to be renovated and sold. My client is not going to live there. And just for clarification, if I may, we're not disputing that we caught the error. There was an error that was made. As soon as it was caught, we're trying to correct it. It's obvious that we're not going to have, I think it stands to reason that logically, no one's going to pull a permit for interior work only, have something done to the exterior as respectfully minor as a deck, and then try to hide it. In other words, it was truly an error that was made. Nobody was attempting to not pull a proper permit.
I get it. Believe me, I get it. But it was built, and it would, you would continue to build it and finish it if the building inspector didn't come and check this out and see it. That's my opinion, as far as I'm concerned, that's borderline fact. The fact of the matter is, you need a variance after the fact, and what I think would be a better solution to this is remove it and perhaps build some stairs, and then you don't need a variance. But at this point in time, it's built, you're asking for forgiveness after the fact, obviously you're working with a builder, he should have had full concern with the zoning laws and the setbacks and everything else, and he didn't, and here you are, and I cannot be moving forward on this.
Okay, so if I may be clear, madam, you're not putting this for a vote, you're, you're...
Well, I'm not going to put it for a vote, I'm just not for it.
Sorry, I misunderstood you.
Questions or concerns by the board at this point? Anybody in the audience?
To the Chair. Attorney, could you just explain to me, I do understand that your client is not going to be living at this property. Could you, I guess I have a question as to, are they in the business of developing, like a house flipping business, you know, is this their first project? And I'm just kind of curious as to the experience that the builder had in this, the owner had, and also the contractor had in this situation.
I can't speak specifically to the contractor. I can speak to the builder. The builder's reputable, and he has done these building projects before. The actual crux of the problem is that it was believed to be a 10-foot setback, and it wasn't obviously a 10-foot setback, it's a 20-foot setback. I haven't, I've just sort of come involved with this today. I'm unaware, I haven't actually spoken with the contractor personally, and I assure you I will, regardless of what this board decides, but this was, projects that get, my client does a number of projects in a number of municipalities, this is one of the ones that, as much as I hate to admit it, simply slipped through the cracks with an error. And so, I understand, I understand the board's position and the Chairperson's position, but we're talking about a three-foot setback on a one-foot-high deck. We're not talking about seeking some extraordinary amount of relief. This is almost de minimis. Understanding it's still relief being sought, but it's not a grievous error.
Counsel, has your client built in Peabody before?
My client has built in Peabody before, but I believe it's been some number of years, going back four or five years. Typically, he builds in Middleton, Revere, Linfield, Peabody just hasn't...
Well, and that's, that's great, but if you're building, you're building, and it sounds like he's built many times before, and these are, these are just regulations and common sense that should be abided by.
Through the Chair. Attorney, you referred to a three-foot setback discrepancy, but the plan that I'm looking at shows that the deck under construction is, that the corner of the deck is 10 feet from the lot line, and the corner of the house is 18.7 feet. So while I agree that the house is a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, it looks to me as though the deck encroaches on that setback almost nine feet, more than the house is currently situated. So I guess, where is the three-feet number that you've referred to a couple of times? Where does that come from?
Okay, specifically in one of the pictures in the package, I'm going to sort of show the board so you can see it, the one showing the existing work with the new work, I believe it's the second picture submitted, I'm not, that's correct, that's the picture, sir, that one. If you look at the new work where it abuts the old work, drawing or taking in line from the corner of the old work to the fence is where you're getting 13 feet. With the new proposed, which is what's shown on the plot plan, which would be from the point of the half-constructed new deck, you're getting the 10 feet. So if I may, point... Correct, that's exactly right. It was simply a matter of squaring the deck off with the edge of the house so you could have stairs that come out of the door rather than going down but onto the deck. It was more of an aesthetic thing than anything else, and it's just, we would honestly prefer not to have to tear the work down and put stairs, which, the Chairperson acknowledged, that would be an alternate solution.
Is the sliding glass door brand new?
I believe the sliding, they're French doors, and I believe they are new.
So in order for this to look the way it looks, with the sliders, you had to extend the deck.
Right.
So the sliders went on, let's extend the deck. Once again, you're asking for a variance after the fact, which the builder should have already known.
Are there any further questions by the board?
Any to speak in favor?
Maybe my client would like to speak, if that's acceptable.
Hi, my name's Jeffrey Moll, and the owner of Black Roof. On this particular project, I use a lot of different contractors. This happens to be a newer contractor. We just did a project where you added a deck... We just did a project where he added a deck, it was a 10-foot setback. Just every season, he just took it for granted, it was 10 feet, he made a mistake. He thought it was a 10-foot setback, but it wasn't, it's a 20-foot. All I'm trying to do is have a slider, so he could walk on the slider rather than walking down the slider, walking upstairs and walking back up the slider.
I don't want to interrupt you. We, I understand that. I know it's a mistake. Oh, the builder made a mistake. But if we let every builder that came here that made a mistake go through, there's no reason to have a zoning board, okay? It's a mistake, it's wrong, you're now asking for forgiveness. I get all that. You put in the slider, you needed to extend the deck, you don't have a variance before the fact, whoever it was that did it should have said before they built, oh, look, let's take some measurements, this doesn't look right. We get it. You can talk from now till doomsday. It was a mistake, we get it's a mistake. However, it's a mistake, and we have denied applicants for lesser infractions. So, you know, we get it.
This is in the yard, it's very private, there's a privacy fence, 30-foot trees. I spoke to the neighbor, doesn't really affect anybody or anything or anybody.
Thank you.
The only one that bothers is you.
Oh, really?
Okay.
I think, right now, we are going to, through parliamentary procedure, we are going to table this right now, and we're going to wait, and we're going to hear this and vote on this at the end of the meeting. So you may sit down, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Now going to hear number three.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 24, 7:00 p.m. in Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 20th and Lowell Street, PBD on the application of Craig and Rachel Childress for a modification to a previously granted variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7.2 as it applies to the premises known as 7 Longwood Ave., PBD, map 124, lot 168. Petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the side yard where 15 feet are required and nine plus or minus feet are proposed. Rear yard where 35 feet are required and 18 feet are proposed. Properties located in our 1A zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Hi, we are Rachel and Craig Childress, and we live at 7 Longwood Ave. in Peabody. We're here basically for a modification of the variance that we came for in September, which was, we are planning an addition because we currently have a two-bedroom house and we need more space for both the birth of our second child last year, and Craig's mom will be permanently moving in with us very shortly, so we need the space to accommodate. The variance that we were approved for was 18 feet in the back where 35 are required and three feet on one side where 15 are required. So after going back and forth with the engineer and the contractor, it was determined that if we simply shift the proposed addition about six feet to the left, further away from the property, it would reduce the, the need, well, it would completely eliminate the need for us to dig a full foundation. We wouldn't have to tear down the retaining wall and rebuild it, and it would drastically reduce the amount of time that we would need to be in our neighbor's driveway doing all of the addition work. So that is why we're asking for the same 18 feet from the back and now nine feet from the side.
Spoke to your neighbors about this?
Yes, they've all written us letters of support, actually.
Questions? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition, the matter's before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call vote, please.
Yes.
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 That was easy. Number four.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals, Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 24, 7:00 p.m. in Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 20th and Lowell Street, PBD on the application of Joseph Elly for variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7.15 as it applies to the premises known as 13 Will Sawyer Street, PBD, Mass., map 98, lot 50. Petitioner seeks a variance for an accessory structure where 500 square feet is allowed and 624 square feet is proposed. Properties located in our 1B zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Through the chair, just before we begin.
Yep.
I do abut this neighborhood, I'm not within 300 feet. I do have some family that is, it's not going to impact my ability to vote on this. I don't believe I'm conflicted out of it.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, and for the record, my name is Ethan Von Zalitis. I'm an attorney, practicing lawyer, 246 Xandar Street in Peabody, and I'm here on behalf of Joseph and Terri Sabeli with respect to this evening's variance application. Mr. and Mrs. Sabeli have been residing in Swampscott for about approximately the last 25 years. Their existing home in Swampscott happens to be a large contemporary, it contains about 4,500 square feet of living area. All of their children are now grown, they're empty nesters, they're lucky enough to be reaching that retirement age, and they do realize it is time to downsize their dwelling. In fact, Terri Sabeli actually grew up in this Peabody neighborhood, she grew up just one street over on Lynch Street, in which she would likely love the opportunity to come back and reside in our city. The Sabelis have owned the property here at 13 Will Sawyer Street for approximately 13 years, and like all the, the majority of the homes in this neighborhood, it is a small, one-story ranch, and it does not have the benefit of any garage. And being in New England, they are, they do desire to be able to construct a two-car garage for protection to their vehicles in the inclement weather, especially in our New England winters, and also to provide them with some additional storage space due to the size of their existing home. As you can see from our site plan, our property already has a paved driveway along the left side yard. As a result, they're proposing to situate this garage to the far-left rear corner of the property since that's the least intrusive location for any accessory structure. In addition, this property is enclosed by a six-foot-high stockade fence. As you can see from our site plan, the proposed garage is going to have the required side and rear yard setback, and it's going to be situated significantly more distance than the minimum six feet from the existing dwelling. The petitioners are, however, requesting this board's approval for them to be able to construct approximately 124 square feet more than the 500, 500 square feet allowed, which is approximately an 8% increase in square footage. By doing this, it provides ample distance so that when you have two cars in the garage, you can open the doors freely, and again, it provides them with some additional storage area. I do have both Mr. and Mrs. Sabeli here with me this evening, and together we'll try to answer any questions that the board or the public may have. Thank you.
Questions? You can shut that off. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Pretty straightforward. Matters before the board.
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Motion is approved.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 24, 7:00 p.m. in Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 20th and Lowell Street, PBD on the application of Robert Brock for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7.2 as it applies to the premises known as 10 Maryville Lane, PBD, Mass., map 8, lot 84. Petitioner seeks a variance to side yard setback where six feet are proposed and 20 feet are required. Properties located in our 1 zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall in advance and prior to the public hearing.
You've come before us before.
Yes, ma'am, yep. Good evening, everyone, Rob Brock, 10 Maryville Lane. I was at the November 18 meeting seeking six feet of relief to the left side of the property for a garage with the room above. Those plans did not meet with the character of the neighborhood, so we completely revised the plans. We are still asking for the six feet of relief to the left side of the property. We are proposing now a single-story garage with additional living space to the rear. We will be expanding an existing room that will tie into the garage. If you look at the, the drawing, the garage will now sit lower than the existing house. I feel like these plans definitely meet with the character of the neighborhood, and we also spoke with the neighbor at 8 Maryville, and we agreed that we would replace the fence with no cost to her, and that's it.
We also are going to read a letter from Rayanne Ebbets into the record.
Date of February 20, 2020, proposed regarding proposed addition at 10 Maryville Lane to the zoning board of appeals members. Since I am unable to attend the meeting on Monday, February 24, 2020, I wanted to write this letter to let the board know. I have reviewed the revised plan submitted without the second story and have no opposition to the revisions. Sincerely, Rayanne Ebbets at 8 Maryville Lane, Peabody.
Just explain the back part of the addition again.
So there's already an existing room there, if you look at the plot plan, and basically what we're going to do is tear that down and, and build the new, you have to pour the foundation, so we're going to redo everything with the right foundation. Right now, that's just a pad, because that was like a three-season porch, so we have to tear it down and redo that foundation and tie it into the garage. Sorry. Yeah, that's it.
Questions? Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Matters before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And to approve?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes, you're all set.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 24, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. in Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 20th and Lowell Street, PBD on the application of Gina Capano and Severio Falcinidi care of Attorney Von Zalitis for a variance in the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7.2 as it applies to the premises known as 10 Namkeg Road, PBD, map 7, lot 70. Petitioner seeks to construct a new dwelling and requires a variance for lot coverage where 25% is allowed and 30.4% is proposed. Lot area 15,130 square feet where 20,000 square feet is required. Lot frontage 119.7 where 125 feet is required. Properties located in our 1 zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeal, Board of Appeals Office, City Hall in advance and prior to the public hearing. Counsel.
Well, how lucky are we to see you twice in one night? Attorney Von Zalitis.
And you don't know that there's no place I'd rather be on a Monday evening than here with you. All right? But for the record, I'm Ethan Von Zalitis, I'm an attorney, practicing lawyer, 246 Xandar Street in Peabody, and I am here on behalf of the petitioners with respect to their variance request. The petitioners are a young couple, they're engaged, they're looking forward to getting married in the near future. They've resided at 10 Namkeg Road for the last five or so years, and Mrs. Capano's mother also resides with them for medical reasons. Their existing home, it was constructed in the 1960s, it's one of your old, one-story slab ranches. It contains, I believe, a kitchen, a combined living room slash dining room, it has three bedrooms, a full bath and a half bath, and it has about 1,500 square feet of area. As you can see from our site plan, it is a corner lot off of Namkeg Road and Catherine Drive. As a result, we only have two direct abutters, and directly across the street on Namkeg Road, I believe, is Symphony Park. The petitioners would like the opportunity to construct a new and larger home in anticipation of having children and having a growing family. However, due to the age, the size, and the condition of the existing home, it just isn't economically feasible to try to salvage that particular dwelling. Instead, the petitioners desire to demolish that existing home and to construct a new two-story colonial-style home in its place. The new home's going to contain a full unfinished basement, it'd have a three-car garage under facing that side of the dwelling that faces Catherine Drive. The first floor is going to have a kitchen, it'd have a family room, a combination living slash dining room, it'd have some office space, and it will also have some in-law living area along with two full baths. And on the second floor, it'd be a four-bedroom with three full baths, and I think the home would contain about 3,660 or 70 square feet of area. Only the front portion of the dwelling that faces Namkeg Road is going to be two stories, and then the rear half that faces Catherine Drive is going to be only one story. As you can see from our site plan, our lot is a legally existing, non-conforming lot, as are all the lots in this particular neighborhood. The our 1 zoning district requires that you have 20,000 square feet, and none of the lots in this neighborhood are, I should say, all the lots in this neighborhood contain less than that. And as a result, they can't demolish the existing dwelling and build a new one without variance relief from this board, which obviously creates a substantial hardship. As you can see from our plan, this proposed dwelling can be constructed so as to conform to all the dimensional setbacks, so as not to intrude on any abutter's privacy. In essence, the real meat of our variance is lot coverage. We're proposing 30.4% rather than the 25%, which is sort of a de minimis increase in lot coverage. If any of the board members are familiar with this neighborhood or even familiar with the surrounding area, you're going to realize that several property owners have done the same thing as the petitioners. They've owned older, one-story slab ranches, they've demolished them and built a colonial style dwelling. I'm one of those people. I did it with the benefit of the, of variance from this board, and I can tell you, if you go and you look in the area, that all of those homes have been a substantial improvement over what existed previously, and they've all certainly increased the value of all the abutting and surrounding properties, and I think if the petitioners are granted the right to move forward with their proposal, that too will also have the same results. I do have the petitioners here with me this evening, and together we'll try to answer any questions that either the board or the public may have. Thank you.
Well, I do have to agree with you with the buildings and the houses in that area, including yours. It, it, it does make a difference. Questions? Audience to speak in favor? In opposition? Hearing none, the matter's before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion is, you're all set.
I'm all set. Well, thank you very much, have a good evening.
Number seven.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 24, 2020, 7:00 p.m. in Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 20th and Lowell Street, PBD on the application of Edward and Angela Shragge for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7.2 as it applies to the premises known as 7 Reed Road, PBD, map 61, lot 55. Petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the rear yard setback where 35 feet are required and 31.9 feet are proposed. Properties located in our 1B zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Angela Shragge, and I live at 7 Reed Road. I'm proposing to build an addition. I don't have the setbacks to the rear, I only have 31.9 feet, and I need 35, and we are looking to gain more living space.
Just through the chair? Looks like you have a drain easement to the left side of your property as you face it. I assume that's why you can't build over there.
That's one of the reasons, correct.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition?
Hi, my name is Linda Shaw. And I'm the neighbor from 7 Downing Road. The letter says Trask or Reed, but we're actually at 7 Downing, next to Andrea. What I'm asking for is, well, a brief postponement so that I may take a look at her application. I neglected to see the invitation to visit City Hall and look over her application for the variance. So I don't know what her plans are at all. So I wonder...
You know what? We're going to have her explain that to you one more time right now and maybe show you some pictures, but...
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah, we, we really don't, we won't continue that. We'll let you see everything right now.
We were aiming to hear the first couple speakers and then we couldn't hear a thing.
Oh, sorry. Are you directly behind me?
No, I'm beside you with the fence that needs to be moved a little bit. At 7 Downing Road.
She lives on Reed Road. She lives on Reed Road.
So I spoke to both my neighbors on either side and the one behind me, so I just have never met you.
She lives on 7 Reed Road.
I received a letter from someone else in the general development, but not, I'm the wrong person here, is what I'm saying. I live on Downing Road. I'm not adjacent to anyone on Reed or Trask.
If I may interject, you, you received this as in a, as in a abutter within the distance that's required. Does not mean that you're a direct abutter. I see your name on the list, Linda and Ann Shaw.
That's correct.
Yeah, so you're at 7 Downing Road. The applicant is at 7 Reed Road. You're within the, the distance. And I'm not sure what the distance is. How many?
300 feet.
300 feet. 300 feet at all, anywhere, 300 feet. If your house is 300 feet from the property, you're going to get a notice. That doesn't mean you are for or against, but that's, it was required that you got a notice.
May I just quickly see the plan and then I'll, then I don't think we'll have it's one of the parallel.
So you're behind me, parallel?
Okay.
Well, you can do that on, on your own time. We're going to vote on this right now?
So I don't get to oppose?
Well, you said you didn't even know where Reed Road was, you know? Okay, thank you. Roll, uh, uh, let's close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Two?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, Mr. Terry...
Cron, ma'am.
Or anything else you'd like to add?
All I'd like to say, Madam Chairperson, is that other than when people get a little heated, and I apologize on behalf of us getting a little heated, what happens sometimes is that we're looking for a little bit of cure for a very small problem. I understand everything with regards to what you've said, and I respect that. All I'm trying to say is that in this particular case, this isn't a development run amok. This is an itty-bitty, small...
I said, we do understand that, but you have to also understand and listen to what I said before.
I heard you.
We have had...
I heard you.
We have had people come before us that, you know, had to move a shed for a foot. And it, it was built after the fact. They come to get a variance. This was also an experienced builder. The fact of the matter is, we acknowledge it's a mistake, but these mistakes have to be halted, especially with experienced builders. So we can either take a vote now or you can decide to maybe continue this. You can maybe build the stairs. You can do, I mean, I'm going to give you an opportunity to decide if you want us to take a vote right now or if you want to change this on your own.
You give me one minute with my client? Thank you. I've conferred with my client. My client would ask that you take a vote now. I would only like to add one thing. In the event we are trying to halt mistakes and errors, at some point in time, though, there's an error that must be forgiven. And then my request to this board is that this is that simple time, not a massive problem that was a project. I understand. And I did hear you, ma'am. So, thank you. Please take your vote.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
All vote go.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to go on the record and say that had, had this been brought, had this application been brought before us prior to the construction, when I look at the plot plan, I do see a hardship. I see that the, you know, the shape of the, of the lot, um, it was a pre-existing non-conforming structure in the first place and it's, it's not all that much more non-conforming by bringing the deck out to be even, even with the house. I, I would have voted in favor of this had this been done. And I just, I feel uncomfortable setting a precedent, allowing the variance after the fact. And for that reason and that reason only, I, I do have to vote no. Having said that, I just want to put that on in the record. You can use that to your, you know, use that how you want to use it, take it how you want to take it. But I, I have to vote no.
And I agree with everything Dan just said. And I too have to say now.
I also see the application as being a little misleading. It was filled out by the owner. There's a contractor doing the work, but yet on paragraph 13 of the application, it states, "So I can walk out of my sliding doors onto my deck." But you stated earlier that the house is going to be resold.
That is correct. I suspect that that was simply an in from out.
So just, you know, there's a little maybe dishonesty going on here to get this passed.
Respectfully, I don't think we can presume dishonesty. I think we can presume a mistake.
Do you vote, Ed?
No.
For all the other reasons mentioned already, I'm going to no.
No, petition has been denied.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Motion to accept the revision of the 40B distribution list. And is this for a specific 40B application? For all 40B applications. And this is in reference to a memorandum submitted by the Conservation Commission to the Zoning Board of Appeals dated February 18th. So motion to revise the 40B application distribution list.
Any opposed? Okay, accept the minutes.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion to adjourn.
That is a wrap, people. Thank you.